Hello, everyone. Welcome to a briefing session of the Leander City Council. Time is 6:20. And I just want to make sure, um, you want to call roll? Just for show. You want to call roll?
Councilmember Penneline Parker. Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Sataquist.
Here.
Councilmember, um, excuse me. Mayor Protem Cernick.
Here.
Councilmember Cannon. Councilmember Cannon.
Oh, here.
Mayor Hill.
Here. So we do have a quorum. We can proceed. At this time, I'll call out an item if anyone has a question on it. Okay, so is there anything on the consent agenda? Anybody wants to ask a question about?
I have a quick question. On the number 11 and 12, the fleet vehicles and brush trucks, those are already in our budget, correct? This is item over and beyond.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So seventeen. Any questions on that?
This is big. I mean, it's going to not mirror, but it's going to look very similar to Maya Vista. Is that right? As far as the commercial, I'm sorry, the residential component?
Oh, I'm sorry, you said.
Smaller lots.
Smaller. So what's Maya Vista? Is that by the 50s?
Um, 50s, yes.
Okay, so this is a little bit smaller.
This will be 45. And Maya Vista has a couple blocks that are alleys. This won't have any alleys.
No alleys.
Right.
I saw the renderings on her, too. So it meets whatever the guidelines we're looking for.
They're going to do a development agreement.
Okay.
Um, it'll be on the November 7th agenda, and that'll be for the masonry. Um, but it'll allow the hardy plank as masonry.
Okay.
Are they going to do the full-size driveways?
It's a question for them.
Okay.
Yeah, I assume no alleys.
You know, the ones that barely fit a car. Make sure that.
I mean, I hope they do. I don't know.
Okay, yeah.
We don't have a prohibition against that, so.
Nor will we.
Right.
But we're not going to force somebody to do it.
No, I wouldn't do anything.
So, Robert, I had a couple of questions. Um, in the planning analysis, under kind of the justification of the PUD, the higher standards, it says increase lot width to 45 feet. Is that because they were previously zoned with 40?
So the way the PUD is structured, they have the SFL use component, and that's a 41-foot minimum. So they're giving a bigger minimum.
Okay.
So four feet greater.
And the masonry wall, isn't that required?
So it would be required if they were commercial building next to residential, but their residential going next to commercial. And that's the gold depository that they're adjacent to.
Great, thank you.
We got on seventeen?
Yep.
All right. All right, and twenty?
All right, so we have a presentation ready to go for that one, right?
Yes.
Okay. That was my own question.
Hold on.
Thank you. I know you were prepared last time. Thank you.
I think we skipped nineteen.
Well, um, it's just, it's the motion.
Guess if we have a.
So that's what I'm wondering is how does this work?
We're just voting on the motion.
On the motion to reconsider.
Yeah.
That item's a motion to reconsider.
Right, but we've never done one. So I was hoping to get a walk through of how a motion to reconsider works.
Yeah.
Okay. For this particular item, a person who voted on the prevailing side of the vote would bring the motion to reconsider, and they would have to receive a second in order for the vote to go forward. If a majority of the council vote in support of reconsidering the agenda item, then the item is back open for reconsideration. It's not limited to the prior vote that was taken. The agenda item as posted is open, full agenda item is open for reconsideration.
And we're allowed to have discussion as to why it's being reopened and the merits of that, right?
It does not say discussion.
I'm asking our attorney.
I don't believe, I need to check the rules. There are certain motions that are debatable and certain ones that are not debatable. So let me check to see if that's a debatable motion. We generally adopt the Roberts rules, and so that may address that issue. So I can look at that while you're continuing the briefing session. If I'm able to answer it before seven, I will. If we get to that item, I'll have an answer before you find that item.
Thank you.
So I have a question. If this fails and we don't, it doesn't go back, how long do we wait before we can bring this issue back up? Or can we peace note the issue in the future? Like, is there a certain time we can't bring this back up? That's what I'm asking.
Let me get the council rules.
It says six months on there, but it doesn't.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it says six rules before that, six months before that item can come up. But let me pull that up.
But that's the whole item, correct?
That is what it says.
Okay.
I will clarify that as well.
Okay.
Okay, 21.
It also says that we can make, it also says that we can make changes on that as the council turns it back to the target council.
Okay, so that is part of my question as well.
We don't want to hamstring ourselves on anything that's not working for it.
So 21?
Yes.
Can you just give us? So this is an old apartment building, and someone's wanting to buy it and renovate it?
To manage it.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's not my item.
Who's item is?
About David's.
Oh, it's Paige.
Oh, it's Paige.
That's why Paige is going, why are you looking at Robert?
It was built in 1997. It was a good time. I was in high school.
Me, too.
It's a transfer of ownership to the, my understanding is the Texas Housing Foundation, which is a regional housing authority. They're created in Burnett County for them to operate outside of their county and within another city. They have to get authorization from the city and have an interlocal agreement without purpose. And so this item is on the agenda for them to get authorization from the city to operate within the city limits for this particular property and to have the appropriate agreement in place.
Because it's not changing anything, because it's already considered.
Right, it's already considered affordable housing. And it's just a transfer of ownership to the Texas Housing Foundation. You'll have a presentation from the applicant and to provide you more information. And what's on the agenda is authorizations they need from the city in order to give effect to that transfer of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Are there, I'm sorry, are there any rest of the city but this one?
It's not that I can see.
Okay.
It's just continuing the use.
Okay.
22. Yeah, I have a question. Um, so we heard about three different options. Is that?
Actually, four.
Four options? Are you going to present all those? So not all of them are 1.5 million, correct?
No, actually, the, the, the most, I guess, the highest price tag is 1.384.
Okay.
The lowest goes down to around 700,000, so between 7 and 1.4. You know, our goal is to certainly, this is just setting the framework. We've come to council on Tuesday night to see if there's something we want to move forward with. And so Tuesday night, when we sort of got the green light, at least to go to this, this, tonight, and put it itself over. That's, that's where we're at, is looking at the dollars to move, to move forward. But certainly, we want to continue to get expert input. We want to involve the Public Art Commission. So we've got a very tight timeline if we're going to continue to take, take advantage of our, our current contractor. That's up to y'all.
Mark, I have a.
So that's what we're looking to do in the next 40 to 45 days.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said because the contractor, they're, they're threatening increased fees if they have to come back and do it later. Can we not just have?
Well, that's typical, we didn't, the contractor didn't say.
Sure, well, well, consultant contractor.
That's our consultant, yes.
Could we not just go ahead and have the conduit put in? And then?
There could be some.
Then come up with the plan for the rest of it.
Something's done like that, absolutely.
Okay.
And you had mentioned we could do the actual, what's it called? The overlooked structure. The stage without the cover. Yeah.
So we're not deciding on a final design by any means?
No, I think we do, we do, we do want to get some additional input from a variety of experts. So absolutely.
But I mean, tonight, we're not deciding on that.
No.
We're just deciding to move forward.
That's right. You're just approving us to move forward funding so we can make those change orders and get those things done. With our, with our design firm first. And then, uh, one other thing that Robert mentioned is we will do a bond resolution, reimbursement resolution on the 7th. So technically, if you approve tonight to move forward, those will be, although it's probably really quick, we're only talking three weeks away. But we do want to get started, so these, the initial funding will come from general fund reserves, if I'm correct, and then the bond resolution, reimbursement resolution on the 7th would then reimburse that with the bond funding. It's just a tight timeframe for that to happen.
Yeah.
Be glad to answer any other questions, though. I'd rather do it now.
Yeah, no, I mean, so concern would be this arbitrary 1.5 number, whatever it is out there, and, and estimating what this thing would be, and then us saying, yes, go ahead and move forward. Want to allocate the funds over here. I've had a little bit of time to sleep on it, too. And just trying to be, I think there's several of us that are trying to spend money correctly and make sure we're getting our most for it. Also, we know that we're on a timeline, so it's, I'm glad you said 40 to 45 days is kind of our window. That's quick.
Well, that's, that's if we get the approval tonight. If we have to wait, then it's additional 40 to 45 days from there because they're not going to be able to start their, the design work and getting our input from various sources as well on style.
How comfortable are you under the gun like that, too, trying to make, trying to make the?
It's, it's really up to you, up to you on if you want to move forward because our contractor hopefully will be out of there in January, uh, as is. And so we know that if this is additional, it'll be another, I think they said 45 to 60 days on site. That still gets us within our timeframe of opening the park in late March, early April. But we're, we're down to that thread of hair, so to speak. And I don't mean that to be a pressure point.
No, no, I know, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, if this is something that, you know, look forward and something else. But, um, I think we've got some really good, good things moving forward with this.
So, Mark, is the, is each designer, are we just paying for the top over it? Like, or is the stage on each one different, or is it the same?
The stage on each one is the exact same size.
And does this pay for the stage or just the top?
It pays for both.
Okay.
Yes.
And when would you, what's the timeline for getting approvals, like, from arts and all of that?
We would do that, I mean, immediately. We would have to call, special call meeting, we'd want them to be with our design firm. Uh, we wouldn't, we couldn't wait another month to do that. I mean, we're, we're talking probably in the next two weeks, three weeks.
Is that going to come back to council for final designs? Okay.
We certainly can do that, absolutely.
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think for something this large. I would also like to see some sort of estimate ROI if we were to be able to rent it out like we talked about to some, you know, some musicians, some, you know, is it just one music fest, three days, a year brings us this much?
I did start on some economic, some musical festivals and changing trends in the industry. I've got a lot, there's a lot of stuff out there that, studies that have been done for these type of, of things. So I'm going through all those as well, so I'll, I'll be able to provide you some better answers.
And I mean real cash money.
Right.
Not just economic impact to our coffee shops, but yeah, so that we could kind of see what, what's coming back into the fund.
Sure.
That would be really nice.
I will say, and to answer your counsel, next question, we have a 25% change order limit on this project. So when we requested 1.4 or 1.5, that was early on, we had to get our executive summary in. But this project cannot exceed, if you move forward, 1.455299 and 28 cents. The estimates come in lower than that, and that's what we're going to continue to try to work down. And I mentioned that on Tuesday, is to, you know, hopefully get that down around 1.2, 1.2 and a half, something along those lines. And I think we're, we can, we can get there.
Any other questions on that?
No, no questions, just a thing.
Okay. So we can't talk about appointments at 25?
Yes. Can we talk about 25? So what, oh, we didn't sit you at the table?
Well, you know, it's not my chair.
You want to sit here?
Y'all want mine? Now, you know, before April 15th, I had a back surgery, I'll take you up on that.
Yeah.
What this is, this is the agreement that will, uh, from the Biden Company, Hanover Insurance, you know, CRU defaulted on this wastewater job back at the end of January. And so it's taken this long to work through the agreement with Hanover and for Hanover to secure a competent party, Austin Engineering is a competent party to complete the work. And they are going to pay us. Basically, you know, we have a file left in the contract. I've got the right thing in front of me. Okay, how much, basically, they're going to, Hanover's going to make a cash payment to us as a result of this, which will make us whole, they're going to make a cash payment to us for $238,467.95.
There's the 67. I knew there's the 67 in there.
And, uh, and so, and, you know, this project basically has been idle, you know, since the end of January. You know, we've, a lot of inconvenience for a lot of parties included in the church. Of course, we did some cleanup there at the church. It's, you know, mu- much better than it was, but it's still rough. Still issues there, still restoration being completed, which is part of the contract. Any other questions or?
I did, but I don't know if this, so when we have this contract, who, what's the safety for the city? Like, let, let.
The performance bond.
Well, not that. I'm talking about like the contract itself. So I drove, I drove it, and because I, I noticed some small things, and I realized it's 608,000, right? But there were some fees in there, like $1,400 tree protection. And as I do the line, there's no trees. So who protects the city from, from a, from a, from a construction company going?
If there's no tree protection, they will be paid for it. They can't claim it.
I'm saying it's in our, it's one of the line items, so.
If it's one of the line items, if they perform it, then they, then we pay it for it. Are you talking about just the cost of that?
No, I'm saying like who, okay, so for instance, there's almost $10,000 for gravel driveway repair. But there's only one gravel driveway that I saw. My question is who, who, who in this, who on staff looks over those contracts and makes sure that, and makes sure like extra stuff is not being thrown in there?
I do.
Okay.
And just to let you know, CRU took this job about, they left about $200,000 on the table. I don't know if that has a factor, but CRU went, they grew up on a lot of different jobs or defaulted on a lot of jobs.
Sure.
30-plus jobs.
Yeah, sure.
Our city attorney's office, you know, was key in this negotiation and preparation. And we also had our input and review of the, of the agreement with Hanover.
Okay.
All right.
I see there's small numbers. They add up.
All right, we're ready to move to 26? We're setting it at nine?
Only 50, 90?
75. No?
I like it.
Mike, Mike O'Neil, we'll be here for the review. And we've done the Pastor Curry traffic study, which is what you have to do to support anything other than prima facie. Our prima facie speeds are 55 to 30. And so basically, starting at Riverside, the 45 mile an hour speed limit, Riverside West is going to go from 45 to 50.
Is there any concern once, like, businesses start opening up on the south side of Hero?
With, as, as we have continued development, we will re-study, and I would expect over a period of time, we'll see it go back down.
Okay.
But this, this, this is the fir-, this is the first traffic study that we've done since the, the rebuilding of Hero Way. We want to give time for people to settle down, track the patterns, settle down.
Sure.
That type of thing, and so this is a result of that, and, and the results compel us to.
Nobody drives under 50 on that one anyways.
Well, yeah.
That I've seen.
Let's just say about 85%.
Just you guys, everybody else.
We have about 85%.
I've seen what I'm watching.
I mean, literally, literally, that's how we end up setting it, is, is you, you want to have the speed limit set so that you've got, as a goal, 85% compliance. You know, you'll have 15% of the people won't be doing what they're supposed to be.
Okay, so this helps with that percentage.
All right, anything else?
There aren't so many lots of revenue opportunities.
We have any concerns coming in? I see people have.
All right.
We have all sorts of.
Appreciate it. These are very helpful.
Thank you so much.
All right, we are adjourned. The time is 6:42. Well, good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, October 17th, and the time is 7 o'clock. And this is the regular meeting of the Leander City Council. We appreciate you coming. Tonight, Chaplain Steven Adams from the American Legion Post 9/11 in Cedar Park will be doing our invocation. If you'd please remain standing for the pledges.
Before we begin this meeting of the people, I'd like to ask our heavenly Father to bless these proceedings. The people attending this meeting, the people of Leander, the great state of Texas, these United States of America. I ask that God give his wisdom and guidance to those entrusted to do the business of the people of Leander, those elected to direct and guide their activities and development of this city, and to give your understanding and patience to all parties bringing their issues and concerns before the council today. Finally, I ask that you, Lord, to watch over our men and women from Leander, and of course, Texas and the rest of the nation, who are serving in our nation's armed forces. May you watch over them and keep them from harm. We ask that you return them safe to us, whole and intact upon completion of this service to our country. We also ask that you guide and protect our first responders as they do their very best to keep us safe and protect us from harm. Dear Lord, please bring us peace. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag? I'm the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, Pastor Adams. We appreciate it. Appreciate everything that you do. Ms. Penberg, could you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Battalion Parker?
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Sataquist?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cernick?
Here.
Councilmember Cannon?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. We do have a quorum where we can proceed. So we're, this time, we're going to move to item six, public comments, which are not on the agenda. I have one speaker signed up, Bob Beavers. Bob here? Oh, hey, Bob. Uh, yes, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. It's almost tall enough. New face. City manager, sir? Yes, sir. You need to hear what I have to say. I know most everybody here. I am a voting resident of Leander. I helped put you here. And I want to say that you're doing a heck of a good job. You need to hear this because you're going to hear a lot of other things in the course of events that are not going to be so easy to take and hard to ignore. You are doing a great job. We elected you for very definite and specific reasons. And we're very proud of you. We love you. I know most everybody here. Self, yourself, sir, welcome. You are joining an illustrious group. Thank you. Thank you for your help. Thank you for the, all the work you're doing. And you must be hearing all kinds of different stuff. And all, all I can say is just steady the course, stay it, stay it well. You're doing a great job. You need to hear this. You need to take it in. There'll be enough people who will try to take that from you. You're doing good. I remember voting for you. Thank you. I don't even need three minutes. That's it.
All right, at this time, we're going to move to item seven, proclamations. I think we have one.
I think you're right. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, and whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court, and whereas state law authorities, municipality, to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Leander. Where am I? Whereas the Leander, city of Leander is committed to the notion, did I skip one? Whereas the procedures for the Leander Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and others, other laws of the state of Texas, and whereas the city of Leander is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary, and whereas Leander municipal judges are not policymakers for the city of Leander, but are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body, of the city of, city council, city officials and employees. And whereas the city council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Leander Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore, I, Troy Hill, mayor of the city of Leander, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 4th through 8th, 2019, is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Leander.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Carroll, um, everybody here. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our outstanding court staff that helps the Leander Municipal Court to run as smoothly as it does. Esmer Esparza? Esmer? Esmer has been with us 15 years. She is our senior deputy court clerk. She also serves as our juvenile case manager and our licensed court interpreter. She has obtained her Level 1 court certification, and she's working on her Level 2 certification and should have it completed in November. Mary Lou Casada? She's been with us 12 years. She is also a senior deputy court clerk. She has her Level 1 certification. She's also working on her Level 2 and should have it completed next month. Karen Smith has been with us for nine years. She is our assistant court administrator. Karen just obtained her Level 2 certification. Candy Garcia joined us two years ago when a new position of deputy court clerk, customer service representative, was added. Candy previously worked for Leander Utility Building for six years. Candy just obtained her Level 1 certification. And I'm so proud of these ladies because we, we work as a team. We get along really well. They walk in integrity. They're, they're honest. They. they walk in integrity, they're honest, they treat everyone that comes to take care of anything that has to do with municipal court with respect and dignity. I get comments all the time from how well that they felt that they were treated and how fairly they felt that they were treated. So I have a certificate that I want to give each one of them. And it says, "With great appreciation for your devotion, commitment, and dedication to the integrity, honesty, and efficiency of Leander Municipal Court. Your outstanding abilities and initiative in serving the public and overcoming obstacles is demonstrated each and every day. May you be proud of the work you do, the person you are, and the difference you make." Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate everything you all do, very much so. This time, we're going to move to item eight, boards and commission reports. Ms. Karen Thompson from our Historical Preservation Commission is going to provide a report.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. As it turns out, this is the ninetieth anniversary of the fall of the Wall Street that started the Great Depression of the thirties, nineteen thirties. One of the things I went through was the nineteen thirty Leander Census. We had, in town, in the direct area, we had fifty-three families. It totaled a hundred and sixty population, and that was the first year that they asked households if they had radios. And ten of those households, ten of those fifty-three households, actually had a radio. The year before, in the twenties, Texas Power and Light came and provided power to town, not out in the country. I hope this is right. This is one page of that census where you go through and analyze and so forth. This is, I wanted to explain kind of how some of the living was in Leander at that time. How did the fall of Wall Street, October of nineteen twenty-nine, how did it affect Leander? Actually, not much, because if someone had said, well, you were already poor, you didn't even know what poor was. Robert and Mary Schoenfield with their pig, and look at their homemade pig house that they put him up for the night. Here's a local family, the Huddelstons. Now, by nineteen thirty, Robert was already having a mule team that he could plow with. And here was Margie Blair in the nineteen thirties at home. She did have a bicycle, lived sort of out in the country, so she would ride her bicycle to town and to school. But Leander was fortunate to have two stores. The Fobbian Brothers Red and White store provided just about everything you needed, and the Pool Sherman store was a little higher class and had great linens and goods like that, and they were open all through the thirties. Here was an ad in nineteen thirty-five that the Leander School paper did, and it's got the filling station, the Fobbian Brothers, the bank, the First State Bank, Mr. Wallace was president of the First State Bank. These were things that were going on around town. You had Stockton Drug Store, and that was next to where the Davis House is. In fact, Mr. Stockton owned and lived in that house. It's really the Stockton Davis House. So these are things that are in town that provide a filling station. Not too many people had Model Ts, Model As, but some did. And then it also tells about some of the Boy Scouts, what they're doing, the Girl Scouts. And town was not bad. It didn't really affect Leander, because they were still doing the things that they had. By thirty-five, here's Bobby Bryson behind that Pool and Sherman store with the Dr. Pepper bottles, and there's his father and brother out in town. Hunting was a big deal, because venison was a lot. Now, if you were a teacher, you've had your teacher registration card. This is Ms. Pat Mason's for the year thirty-seven, thirty-eight. She was thirty-one years old. She taught over at the Whitestone School, and she got a hundred dollars a month for teaching, and that was very nice. That was a good salary. This is the WPA. The school burned in nineteen thirty-nine in the summer, so they needed a school. How can we hurry up and get a school? And they did it by contacting the WPA, the Works Administration, and that's how the new school was built in time for the forty, forty-one, and the forty-one graduation. They walked across the stage at the new school that WPA worked on. WPA furnished the Round Mountain School with a water fountain. They dug a well, and they fixed a water fountain, which is, I wish this, I was going to highlight. Never mind it, my time's up anyway. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You did get five minutes tonight, so that's a good thing. All right, at this time, we're going to move to item nine, where the council will convene into executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-oh-seven-two, Texas Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of easement rights from Kathy Lynn Hall and Alan Parsley for the Raider Way East Woodview Roadway Project, and B, section five-five-one-oh-seven-four, Texas Government Code to deliberate the appointment and employment of a city manager, and section five-five-one-oh-seven-one, Texas Government Code, and section one-point-oh-five, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct, to consult with legal counsel regarding HBA Residential Care Group, LLC versus City of Leander, HUD case number zero-six-dash-one-nine-dash-five-four-five-four-dash-eight, and a proposed conciliation offer. The time is seven eighteen. We are now in executive session. All right, it is eight twenty-seven. We are back in session. At this time, the city council is going to convene into open session and take any action as determined appropriate in the city council's discretion regarding section five-five-one-oh-seven-two, Texas Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of easement rights from Kathy Lynn Hall and Alan Parsley for the Raider Way East Woodview Roadway Project, and section five-five-one-oh-seven-four, Texas Government Code to deliberate the appointment and employment of a city manager, and section five-five-one-oh-seven-one, Texas Government Code, and section one-point-oh-five, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct, to consult with legal counsel regarding HBA Residential Care Group, LLC versus City of Leander, HUD case number zero-six-dash-one-nine-dash-five-four-five-four-dash-eight, and a proposed conciliation offer. Mayor Protem, do you have a motion on A?
Yes, two, I guess, two parts here. So we moved to approve the purchase contract for the acquisition and fee simple conveyance of zero-point-zero-zero-two acres, more or less, for a right-of-way dedication and acquisition of zero-point-zero-five-five acres, more or less, of public utility and sidewalk easement from Kathy Lynn Hall in the amount of five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents. Also, we moved to approve the purchase contract for the fee simple and permanent easement rights of zero-point-zero-seven-one acres, more or less, for the right-of-way dedication and acquisition of zero-point-zero-seven-two acres, more or less, of public utility and sidewalk easement from Alan and Carla Renee Parsley in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars and zero cents.
And section B?
Yes, I make a motion to extend an offer of employment to Rick Beverlin for the position of Leander City Manager and to authorize the mayor, upon the completion of standard background checks, to execute an employment agreement once it is informed deemed acceptable by the contract subcommittee previously authorized on October fourteenth.
And C?
We're going to take no action.
Okay. So on item A, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Oh, that's wrong. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Item B, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second, all in favor. Passes unanimously. And C?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, we're good to go. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move to our consent agenda. This is an action item.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor. All right, passes unanimously. All right, we're going to move to item seventeen. We're going to open a public hearing regarding zoning case nineteen-dash-Z-dash-zero-zero-seven to amend the current zoning of HC-dash-four-dash-C, heavy commercial, and TOD-PUD-dash-CD, transit-oriented development, planned unit development, conventional development sector, to TOD-PUD, transit-oriented development, planned unit development, and planned unit development with the base zoning district of SFL-dash-two-dash-B, single-family limited, and GC-dash-three-dash-A, general commercial, on one parcel of land approximately forty-point-six-nine-two acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R-three-two-one-eight-two-five, commonly known as four-oh-one Heritage Grove Road, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Ms. Griffin?
This is a public hearing for the proposed reserve at North Fork Planned Unit Development. This project's located at the southwest corner of one-eighty-three and Heritage Grove. The applicant is requesting the base zoning districts of single-family limited-dash-two-dash-A and general commercial-dash-three-dash-A. The single-family limited use component would allow for the development of single-family homes, and the portion on the western side is where they're proposing single-family, and then the commercial is closer to one-eighty-three. The two land uses are going to be divided by the future extension of Broad. It's going to come up this direction. This is the location of the gold depository, so they did dedicate part of the right-of-way, so that'll complete that street network. The GC use component would allow for the development of small-to-large-scale commercial, retail, and commercial service uses. The PUD does include some waivers, as well as higher standards. This is their conceptual site layout plan. One of their waivers is changing the perimeter block length requirements. So under our current ordinance, they would be required to build a road connection this direction. We've reviewed the area, and we agree that it's appropriate not to require that extension. They have a drainage easement located here for another property, so it's not extending a network. If that is approved, then the church that's proposed down here, they're not going to extend a road as well, so they had that in their plans. So that would be another change to look for. They are proposing a landscaping buffer and a six-foot-tall masonry wall as part of their project, so that would be located here. So since the gold depository went in first, and they were next to commercial, they weren't required to build a wall. So since residential's coming in after the fact, they're going to build the wall. They have provided an increased lot width, so they're proposing forty-five feet instead of forty-one feet, and one of the other changes, the waivers, would be changing the requirement for an extra architectural feature when garages are in front of the dwelling. Staff did recommend approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also approved the request at their meeting previously. I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
The public hearing is still open. Would anybody like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Peter Verdicchio with SEC Planning. Here's evening on behalf of the applicant. Just want to take a couple of quick seconds. I know it's been a long night already. Just wanted to let you all know that this was a project that came before you. There are some new faces here, but we did come forward to the council back in February to discuss this project, and, boy, a lot has changed since that time between changes to the city ordinance, state house, and legislative changes there, but we've come forward for your consideration this evening, essentially with the same project, same presentation material, housing opportunity. Appreciate your consideration, and will be available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to the action item regarding zoning case nineteen-dash-Z-dash-zero-zero-seven.
I'm motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve with a second. Any more discussion?
Well, I'd just like to point out that that was kind of a sector of our city that we kind of wanted to save for some heavy commercial and other things, and that's, you know, the gold depository is a high-security facility. So I'm not sure that this is a good use right next to a high-security facility to have residential neighborhood budding up to it like that. And, you know, once all the land in the city is gone to neighborhoods, we're not going to be able to reclaim it for commercial. I'd just like to make that point.
I'd like to add on to that, and that is the property just to the north on Heritage. We did not allow them to do the heavy industrial that they were zoned for and the future land use allowed for, and P&amp;Z had made the, tried to get rid of all of the pink and purple there as it was, so since we disallowed and took away the heavy industrial for the north part there, I think that this is a happy medium.
You're talking about the Haven Oaks? Is that where that is right now?
Mr. Stringer's property.
Yes, and, well, the objection there was what he was going to do with it and.
Heavy industrial, heavy industrial.
Well, it was, they were concerned about the construction materials, because it was going to be the site to place all the demolition, and I'm not sure it was exactly the zoning, but it was the use that was the issue there on that property, but nevertheless.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor. All opposed. Motion passes six to one. Thank you, sir. All right, now we're going to move to item eighteen. We're going to receive a presentation on the North Line Development from.
I'd just like to make that point.
I'd like to add on to that, and that is the property just to the north on Heritage, we did not allow them to do the heavy industrial that they were zoned for and the future land use allowed for. And P&amp;Z had made the, tried to get rid of all of the pink and purple there as it was, so since we disallowed and took away the heavy industrial for the north part there, I think that this is a happy medium.
You're talking about the Haven Oaks? Is that where that is right now?
Mr. Stringer's property.
Yes, and, well, the objection there was what he was gonna do with it and put on it.
Heavy industrial, heavy industrial.
Well, it was, they were concerned about the construction materials, because it was gonna be at the site to place all the demolition, and I'm not sure it was exactly the zoning, but it was the use that was the issue there on that property, but nevertheless.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six to one. Thank you, sir. All right, now we're gonna move to item 18. We're gonna receive a presentation on the Northline Development from Alex Teimberg, if he can make it up here. There is a hospital in your area of your development, right?
Happy that there is. Elective meniscus surgery.
I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity. I'm Alex Teimberg, and I'm the property owner. I have 115 acres that I've been working with the city for the past three years on a significant development. I'm very excited to be here tonight to provide the council with an update about this project. I'd like to welcome Northline's commercial development partner, David Neer with Lincoln Property Company, who's here. They also are our construction manager. I'd also like to introduce Jed Bowie, who is with Bowie and Company, our public relations We have been very deliberate and thoughtful with our planning, with a best-in-class team in place. I hold this responsibility of developing Leander's downtown core an honor, and it requires that we develop this property in the best possible manner for the city. I am very passionate about this project, and I take the city's investment in the infrastructure through Northline very seriously. I want you all to know that I live, eat, and breathe this Northline project every day and all throughout the day. We have a vision to deliver to the city a unique and transformative mixed-use project that is starting very soon, and it will be realized over the course of 10 to 15 years. The placemaking aspect of this development is very important, which helps to guarantee the success of Leander's downtown. It is my belief and my objective that Northline will put Leander squarely on the map for town center mixed-use projects. I look forward to making the city very proud of its downtown and to champion the Northline project as I do on a daily basis, and I thank you again for our partnership, as this is your project too. Now, Northline is at a very pivotal juncture, as we are taking this project from plans on paper to shovels in the ground very soon, with a target of being ready at the end of this year. I am here tonight to provide the council with an update, but in this context, I believe it is important to recap as to how we got here in getting our PUD and development agreement approved. I would not be here tonight without these council approvals last summer in 2018. First, I'll focus on the plans and showing some inspiration for the vertical projects as we aim to provide the best architectural quality to Northline, which strives to meet a balance between hill country tradition and contemporary architecture design. Second, I will briefly cover the economic assessment as well, because I want the city, as I want the city to be very successful with its investment. As this project increases the city's tax base, it brings the community further together and creates a truly compelling destination for the city and greater region. This slide just covers the fact that this is a unique opportunity. I'm gonna, I look like I'm losing time here, so I'm gonna quickly move through this. Northline's orientation, as you all know geographically where this is located, I wanna take a little time to talk about our plan, our master plan by David M. Schwartz. We've got a variety of product types that are shown in this Level 1. This is a depiction of the full build-out of what this project, we realize that this project could be. A lot of the red there on the lower level is our important retail component. Some of the other colors represent some of the other product types. This is the upper level, showing what's happening above that Main Street, lower-level retail in particular. So, I'm gonna flip through some slides and orient you on this map a little bit in more detail. Critical, critical piece of this project is obviously the retail core. So, this is a depiction of how some of those architectural projects could look along Main Street and up along that northeast corner, which is really the critical entry point to the project. Here's a view along Main Street with a rendering from our land planner. And then, a critical component to the project and the heartbeat of the project from our perspective is Town Square right in the middle, and these are some rendering, or some depictions of what some of the retail around Town Square would look like. I'm gonna get to Town Square in a bit. Here's some upper level depictions of what those buildings may look like. Office is obviously gonna be very, very important to the project, and so office would logically be located along the arterial access roads, and here's some depictions of what those might look like. We've got residential multifamily as part of the project, as well as townhome. Northline Town Square, very, very exciting to talk about. We've had some design coordination with the city, with the leadership as well as staff. We're actually in the process of moving that process forward as well. Town Square will serve as really the core and the heartbeat of the downtown, and we've got some description of some of the amenities and the programming that we're working with the city staff on. Here's some depictions of Town Square. What it could look like, what it will look like. That, yes, that is Phase 1, so we're moving forward with Phase 1 in the near term, and then Phase 2, we're gonna, we're gonna wait on Phase 2 and wait till some of that area fills in and really get a feel for exactly where, how that Town Square's gonna be built out to finalize Phase 2. This slide depicts the importance of the investment by the city. This slide, it's a recap of the Urban 3 analysis, which substantiates the city's investment. I'm gonna run through just real quickly some of these slides showing how much tax value would be generated from the project, showing the three phases in purple, and how this project kinda compares to other urban areas in Williamson County and along the rail line as well, and what it would compare to Cedar Park. Next steps. Obviously, the critical next step for us is breaking ground, and so we are in the process of working closely with the city staff on getting that permit obtained, and we anticipate and target at the end of the year, being able to award a contract. Obviously, we come back to council for that award, and we've got an 18- to 24-month timeframe for that construction. Town Square would follow that as well. We are, we are making a lot of progress with lining up our vertical projects. This process will be market-driven, but we are on track to be well ahead of the requirements and milestones laid out in the development agreement and the TERRS agreement. We've got really our kind of four key product types, retail, office, multifamily, townhome, and we are making tremendous headway on all those fronts. As an example, we'll be meeting with staff, with the Lincoln office folks tomorrow to talk about permitting, which is very exciting. We've also got some capital metro coordination, which I'm doing what I can to help influence some legislation, so there's more to come on that that we can talk about at a later time. Here's the depiction of the infrastructure, I realize I'm down about 43 seconds. Here's what sort of Phase 1 buildings' locations would look like, both ground level and upper level. Here's some massing depictions of how the project could get built out. And then, this shows our Northline team. Let me go back. I hope that the city is as excited as I am about this project. I am happy to provide regular updates to city council, as I'm doing this evening, and I wanna thank you tremendously for all your support and your time. Absolutely, I'm here for questions.
So, now, as the initial outreach for the different areas of office, I know it's possible that you're probably not, how that is going to be in those sites, office space, and also.
Yeah, well, really, Lincoln Property Company was brought on as a commercial partner to lead that effort, given their expansive depth and experience in that arena. Lincoln came on at the end of June, and so we took a little bit of time to get our materials together and get the marketing ready to launch. Real estate is fairly slow during the summer, so it was a perfect opportunity to kinda get prepped and start making that happen this fall. My understanding from the office side, and we're gonna be talking more about that in the morning, is they've got some tenants lined up, and they're looking at that first building. The beauty of Lincoln is they are the sort of 800-pound gorilla in Austin right now. They've got four and a half million square feet of commercial development in their pipeline, and so they are talking of all the big users, and so the corporate campus folks that may not necessarily wanna be in downtown Austin, may not necessarily wanna be in the domain, this is the next project that they're pushing. And that's what we've needed. We've needed a group that does this on a daily basis, that has the depth of connections to be pushing this project. On the retail side, David here, he leads Lincoln's retail out of Dallas, which is their headquarters. We hired a local retail brokerage firm, Weitzman, who, after lots of interviews, decided they were gonna be the right fit. We've got a first initial report from them a couple days ago that, we have three anchors that we're targeting, cinema, fitness, and small grocer, and we have interest across all three right now. So, we're now in the process of talking and just trying to figure out which is the right group, and that can come in at the right time, but we've got, we've got very, very big plans. And if you have any questions for David, he's here to help respond to any questions you might have as well. But I couldn't ask for a better partner in Lincoln. I think we are so well-positioned to make Northline, you know, incredible success on the commercial front.
Yeah, so on the timeline, I think you had said permits by the end of the year, and horizontals done in 18 to 24 months? So, when do you anticipate verticals from there?
Vertical can align in the same timeframe.
Okay.
We need to meet fire requirements, so as we get our general contractor underway and start to prioritize certain blocks, because we have users in those blocks, the key is you gotta have, you gotta have access, vehicular access, and you have to have fire hydrant access in order to go vertical, but we're gonna make that obviously prior, we're gonna work with our contractor to prioritize certain blocks as we have, you know, I think what we're gonna have is a pent-up demand for our users to get going before we're able, they're able to get going, because of the requirements of fire, but that's a good problem to have, is we line all these user types up to, all these user groups up to start their vertical construction as soon as we can allow them to do so.
So, you estimate that, what, in 18 months, once you start?
I believe there'll be certain blocks that can start before 18 months, but there'll be some blocks that have to wait till we get the infrastructure in place for them to go vertical.
So, vertical, you're expecting, what, by '23 or '24?
Absolutely, there'll be lots of buildings built by those two years.
Okay, but you're starting January 2020 with horizontal?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, great.
Now, Alex, tell me again, how many apartment units do you know off the end?
You know, over the long-term plan here, you know, could be up to 2,000 units, but our first project is a 300, more or less, project that's gonna be at the southern entrance to Northline, and we have, we have five groups that are in the sort of mix, and we're, you know, finished the contract with the top group today that we're submitting and negotiating, so we're real excited.
You know, the smart code is now optional?
Yes.
Does that change anything, or does it help, or does it affect it at all?
I think with our PUD, we've got what we need for our project, but obviously, the projects that, and the properties that are around, surrounding Northline have more flexibility.
And so, the apartments on the south, are those straight apartments, or are those ones with retail on the ground floor?
There's a requirement in the PUD that the, the buildings that align Main Street have retail convertible units, and so they will be built for that conversion, and it'll be up to the owner of that building to use that section according to how they wanna use it. But it will be retail convertible, it'll be built for retail, so that those sections can be retail used.
Okay, and that's the first block of apartments that you're gonna be building?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Great.
Would you be interested in the future in maybe participating in a workshop on a potential site for a city hall, or?
Absolutely.
Discussion about what if?
Absolutely, Mayor, and that was, you know, referenced in the project. It would be, it would be ideal to have a civic component as part of this town center development, so yes.
Okay, awesome.
Great.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be driving by there from now on, I wanna see something going up if possible.
We're working hard. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna move to item 19. There's a motion to reconsider an ordinance amending Article 1.03 of the Code of Ordinances to amend rules governing public comments at city council meetings, adopting rules of decorum, providing a severability clause, effective date and open meetings clause, and providing for related matters. I do have some speakers signed up. When I call your name, give your address, you have three minutes. First is Stephanie Burcu.
Thank you, my name is Stephanie Burcu. I live on Champion's Corner Drive in the fairways of Leander, and I wanna start by saying, thank you first of all. The sign-in and getting your information to be able to speak was very easy tonight. There was someone waiting there, they came back to clarify and make sure everything was understanding, I really appreciate that. I know based on looking on the online website that you guys had a very busy week. I did reach out to kinda try and talk about this, and Murphy's Law followed me this week. Quite an entertaining story, not gonna tell you right now, but, so I wasn't as available as I had hoped, and I didn't get a chance to talk with you guys this week about an item that's on the agenda, and there have been some non-agenda items that I have brought up to one of you that hasn't really had a chance to really have a conversation. So, I would really like you to reconsider again not to limit the amount of time for public comments, because you guys do have weeks where things are crazy busy, and it's hard for you to have time to talk with us, or our schedules are busy and it's hard, and limiting to 15 people, that's not fair for the 16th person that wants to talk. I don't have a problem with you reducing the minutes from three to two if you have a large number of people, but I really would urge you to not limit the number of speakers on non-agenda items. From the meetings that I've been here, I think last week was the most speakers that I've seen. I've only been coming a couple of weeks, but it really hasn't been... I've only been coming a couple of weeks, but it really hasn't been that much. Um, and so, I would really just like you to consider that. Um, but there have been a lot of things that I think went really well this week. I really, actually, it was really nice having someone out there to help. They came back to clarify whether we were speaking in the front or whether we were speaking with the agenda item. And I know you guys have been busy this week and I really do appreciate everything you've done. I know that it may not have come across that the last couple of weeks, but I do think it's important that we as citizens have a chance to talk with you. And because life is busy and you guys have a lot to do for the city as well as your own jobs, please consider not limiting the number of speakers for the non-agenda items. Thank you.
Mary Hexton Beck? Am I getting closer?
I'm Mary Hinkstebek. I live at sixteen zero nine Lyons Den. And I think the new ordinance is much clearer and I, I appreciate that. The one thing is if you're going to keep a time limit, I'd request that you increase it at least to twenty minutes. Thank you.
All right, um, at this time, I guess we will take a vote. Uh, we can discuss the... What? Nineteen, you're, you've signed up for twenty.
We haven't received legal clarification yet. So, the council has adopted its rules and has generally adopted Roberts' rules. The, with respect to a motion for consideration, if the underlying motion that's being reconsidered is debatable, that means that the motion for reconsideration is debatable. Debatable means you, you bring up this item with a motion to reconsider and if it receives a second, then you can have discussion on that item. That's what debatable means. If an item's not debatable, it's kind of just an administrative proceeding, a procedure. We don't have one of those in front of us, so I'm not going to go into that too much, but it is an item that can be discussed. With respect to the scope of the discussion, your council rules themselves say that... Let me pull this up. Under section C three A of your council rules, council members shall confine their discussions concerning a motion or a question to the merits of the motion made and seconded. So, the discussion with respect to a motion that I anticipate would be made here would be with, would, you would discuss and debate the issue about reconsidering the item.
So, I've made the motion, right? Or do I have to make it again?
You have to make the motion. So, you've requested that the item be placed on the agenda to be reconsidered, so that's the first step. The second step that has to happen is that there must be a motion made by a person who is on the prevailing side of the vote.
That was me.
Yes.
And then a second by anybody.
Right, a second by anybody. So, there, there were five people that voted in favor of the ordinance passing, so one person makes, who is on the side of the five, makes a motion to reconsider the item. You must receive a second.
And then we have discussion?
If you have a second, then you have discussion.
Okay.
And the discussion is limited to that specific motion that's been made about, should we reconsider this item or not?
Not the item itself.
Not the item itself, just should we reconsider it or not? And the reasons for reconsidering it or not reconsidering it.
Okay.
And then if the motion prevails, then you open up the item for discussion and under your rules, you can, you're not just limited to the specific motion that was made at the last meeting, that motion being adopt the ordinance with a series of changes. You, you can, you can open up the whole ordinance for discussion.
Okay. I think I got it.
Okay, and I'm, can answer questions.
Yes, stay close to walk us through.
Yes.
Okay, I am going to make a motion to reconsider this. I'll second. So, now we can discuss? Okay, the reason I wanted to bring this back for reconsideration is because at the point that we had voted on it, a lot of the issues in it were unclear and it was late at night and it was so debated and late and people were fatigued that what we saw on the very next item was things just went haywire and we had no vote on it. So, I think that in all fairness, it does need to be brought back. And am I allowed to go into what was unclear about it?
I think that would be within the scope.
Okay, thank you. Um, I thought that several issues were, were unclear that were voted on. So, um, the more than fifteen minutes for, or, sorry, if more than fifteen minutes worth of speakers were, were there for open comments, then we would push people to the next agenda, but then obviously that's going to...
I'm sorry, Counselor, this is discussing the item itself. This is discussing the, the...
I'm discussing what was unclear.
This is beyond discussing, discussing the motion to reconsider. This is going into what we passed itself, talking about limiting speakers or whatever.
This is more of an art than a science, to be fair, on that. So, it's the merits of the motion for reconsideration, um, arguments in favors or against whether the item should be reconsidered.
Well, I'm going to call the question.
Really?
Really.
If you want to silence me in here, you are not going to like what I say outside.
I'm sorry, you're out of order. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of calling the vote?
Calling the vote.
Calling the question. All those against? All right. The vote. Now, we take a vote. There is a motion to reconsider and a second. All in favor?
All in favor of reconsidering, right?
Reconsidering. All opposed? All right. Motion is denied. All right, we move to item twenty. Discuss and consider conveyance from Central Texas Regional Mobility Authority, CTRMA, of deed of approximately six acres of land, commonly known as the Bryson Farmstead, also known as the Pioneer House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The Bryson Farmstead is a six-acre tract of land located at the northeast corner of the tollway, one eighty-three A and San Gabriel Parkway. I'm going to take us back to about ten years. It won't be as entertaining as Mrs. Thompson's historical preservation, but I'll do the best I can with, with what I know. So, ten-plus years ago, uh, the tollway, one eighty-three A, was under construction and after that construction had received its federal and state approvals to start, the Bryson Farmstead was discovered to be a recorded Texas historic landmark. So, at that time, uh, the Federal Highway Administration, uh, determined that the construction would have an adverse impact on the property. Uh, and I'm glossing over a lot of intermediate steps between, um, the feds, TexDOT, interested groups, um, CTRMA, et cetera. But eventually, in two thousand and eight, a memorandum of understanding was developed to allow the construction of an, of an at-grade intersection between San Gabriel Parkway and one eighty-three A. Williamson County had plans to extend San Gabriel Parkway, um, from the east to, uh, one eighty-three A, so... A, a lot of parties involved, as I mentioned. The original signatories to the memorandum of understanding were the Federal Highway Administration, the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, and the Texas State Historic Preservation Office or Officer. Invited signatories, um, were TexDOT, CTMRA, Property Honors, Williamson County Commissioners Court, and the City of Leander. Consulting signatories were Preservation Texas, Williamson County Historical Commission, and a descendant of, uh, the Bryson family. So, in the memorandum of, of understanding that was executed back in two thousand and eight, a number of things were identified. These are just a few highlights. Within two years of the execution, certain things were to happen by TexDOT in consultation with, um, the State Historic Preservation Officer. In the MOA, in particular to the city, uh, what is called out is a Phase One Preservation Plan, which, once the property is conveyed to the City of Leander by the CTRMA, the city is to conduct an adaptive use study, an initial planning document, in consultation with the Williamson County Historic Commission, Historical Commission, and the Texas State Historic Preservation Office. After the Phase One, the city shall, in consultation with those same groups, develop a preservation master plan. The map up here shows the six-acre tract, um, and that's the northeast corner of one eighty-three A and San Gabriel Parkway. These are some, some, um, current photographs of, of buildings, uh, at the Farmstead and, and other buildings on the property today. The Preservation Master Plan, which the city is to undertake and complete once it, uh, takes possession of the property. Its purpose is to guide a structural rehabilitation of the historic buildings and the related cultural landscape. It's to include a maintenance plan, it's to include tools to mitigate adverse impact from subsequent private development, and it shall be finalized concurrently with the filing of the final subdivision plat of the property surrounding and abutting the six-acre tract. That's a lot of words, but, um, uh, the six acres, the boundaries, um, the, the, the property owners, um, can come back and request modification of those boundaries, um, up until such time as the property surrounding it is, is finally planted. They wanted to maintain some flexibility, um, that those are, those are minor adjustments, but it, it was kind of a flexible provision to allow them to, um, develop around the property, uh, without being permanently fixed. There is a preservation easement on the property, uh, over the, the six acres. In the memorandum of agreement, it states that the house, cistern, and barns, as well as the remainder of the six-acre tract, shall be restored and maintained in accordance with the U.S. Secretary of the Interior standards. So, that's, uh, what we will be operating under. The agreement also outlined that the CTRMA would put up a one million dollars in escrow, which the city would then use to carry out its obligations, uh, under the agreement. That million dollars is, uh, to be used for developing adaptive use options, conducting studies, and developing consultation with TexDOT and the State Historic Preservation Office, educational materials for local schools and the public, as well as carry out the task identified in the preservation plan. Any unused portions of the escrow funds, after two years after finalization of the final preservation plan, are to be returned to CTRMA. If there's, if there's any left. To date, these are the expenditures that have been made, all occurred, um, approximately seven, seven years ago. Shortly after the escrow was established in, um, mid-two thousand and eleven, uh, the City of Leander, uh, engaged Coleman Associates in conjunction with the, um, an architectural firm to begin developing the master plan around the six-acre tract. This was a small contract of thirty-seven thousand dollars. The city paid a little less than fifteen thousand dollars and then, um, uh, asked the, um, consultant to temporarily halt work and, um, that is where that stopped. The urban de- design officer that was in charge of this project left the city in two thousand and thirteen. There's a small four-hundred-dollar legal services bill related to the, the large item, which in August of two thousand and twelve, um, the city used three hundred thousand dollars of the million escrow to construct sidewalks along what is now known as Mel Mathis, um, road, roadway. Uh huh, uh huh? Yes, sir. There were some conceptual drawings of, of the, of the six-acre tract and how future access could be, um, obtained either to, um, San Gabriel or one eighty-three A. Again, that, at the time, the, the, the boundaries of the six acres were not, um, set in stone. Obviously, the historic properties had to be included in that six acres, um, but the property owners wanted to, um, before they, before they signed the preservation easement, they wanted to know how that might impact their future development prospects for the remaining hundred-plus acres on their property. So, we have some, some sketches and drawings of, of, of that, so... You know, I'd have to defer to the previous urban devi- design officer. What I was told at the time was that, um, uh, that could be incorporated into a, a larger context of, of, um, how the, the family in the eighteen hundreds would have traveled either... Somebody's going to criticize me for my geography of, uh, Leander and Cedar Park, because I don't know it, but, uh, either to the creek or to market, that sort of thing. So, um, that is what was, um, suggested and, uh, council approved that and...
Weren't we supposed to take possession of it though before we stream any of the funds?
It does not say that.
It doesn't say that?
No. And, uh, anytime the funds were withdrawn, there was quarterly report back to the CTRMA and TexDOT on, on the use of those funds.
And they signed off on the freedom of housing?
They do not have to sign off on, on that. It's just a reporting requirement.
I have some similar questions on that issue, so it, it looks like in, uh, let's see, August twenty-twelve, three hundred thousand spent on the sidewalks. And I understand our urban designers no longer here, but, um... Assuming Legal reviewed this and that, um, our former city manager was on the job at that point, I'm shocked that three hundred thousand was spent on sidewalks from Mel Mathis, because the way I read the memorandum of agreement, it doesn't permit for that. So, my question is, did Legal give any advice at that time? Did anybody sign off on it?
Well, this, um, the urban de- design officer signed off on the, uh, quarterly report saying that the expenditures were in, um, in accordance with the agreement, um, and council approved the, um, the budget amendment and the, the funding contract. It can simply be corrected if the city wants to appropriate three hundred thousand dollars and put it back into escrow. But the, the three hundred thousand dollars, um, was necessary to... But the $300,000 was necessary to, what generated that even? Brainstorming, which was not a part of the brainstorming. But the city of Leander had a $4 million grant from TechDOT to build what is now known as Mel Mathis. It didn't have a name back then. It's the Greenfield. But there was a million-dollar match, and the city did not have the funds. So, private landowners contributed an extra $400,000 and went to the TERZ Board and got a reimbursement agreement for that $400,000. The TERZ Board had a small fund balance, so it contributed $150,000. The city of Leander general fund had $150,000, so the match was still $300,000 short. So, the city was looking at losing a $4 million grant or coming up with the funds. So, I mean, times have changed. City's a lot healthier now. If we want to amend the budget and restore that $300,000, the sidewalks are in place. I don't, I mean, I don't have any objection to that. But the item tonight is to accept the deed from the CTRMA so we can actually start putting into effect that MOA and start the preservation plan.
So, we have the entire plan in place from the Historical Commission, I guess?
No, we need to start...
We gotta take this before we can flip.
So, Robert, if we don't accept it, what does that mean?
Well, I don't think the CTRMA is going to be happy. You know, the city did sign that agreement, saying that if certain conditions are met, that we would be a partner. For whatever reason, the CTRMA, and I'm not blaming anybody, but for whatever reason, we're now here to accept the six acres from the CTRMA.
So, accepting that would, the appearance is that maybe this was not done in the best manner. I'm not hearing you say that there was anything unlawful about it, but it doesn't sound like it was the best. It sounds like a very creative way to get something accomplished. So, is this, accepting this, the way to correct that?
Completely unrelated.
Okay.
I'd like to motion to accept...
I do have some people signed up. I'm going to let them come speak.
Oh, due to a public comment, yeah.
Okay. If you'll just stand by, maybe, if we need you. All right, first is Stephanie Burquie.
My name is Stephanie Burquie. I live on Champions Corner Drive, and this came up last item, and it has been floating around in my mind all week. The historical preservation person that spoke last week gave a lot of history about this land and about ways that it could be preserved and used in a way that would benefit our community. And all week, I've been thinking about Connor Prairie, kind of when I was thinking about that. My family lived in Indianapolis for nine years, and up in Fishers, there was a place called Connor Prairie, and it was a living history museum. And so, there were some old homes that had been preserved, but it was also turned into a learning experience for kids. My kids would love to go up there. They had chickens you could chase, and they would do reenactments of the Civil War, and it was just a great way to preserve a historic site. And so, all week, I've just been marinating on the Historical Preservation Committee's presentation last week, and really, the way they urged you guys to really consider how to use that, and that might be something to look into and consider, and just think of a way that it might be able to help the community. I know I moved here with older kids. There's not as much to do here as there was in Indianapolis with young kids without going all the way into the city. And really, we lived in the city in Indianapolis, and we would drive out to the suburbs to go to Connor Prairie, and we have some great family memories. So, you know, as you're thinking about what to do and what you're able to do, just think back to the history lesson we were given last week and what this land might represent for our kids or even the next generation, and how we might be able to preserve some of that history. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Hill, Council. I think it's really obvious that the city has got to step up and, there's no way you're going to go back and say, "Well, there's $300,000 for those sidewalks. It's just preserving this farmstead over here." I mean, there is no way you're going to make that make any sense. And believe me, I've talked to PICS and everything else, and it was the thing to do at the time. Let's just put it that way. But the city has got to step up and say, "All right, this got dropped. The ball was dropped, but we have a chance here to have a farmstead that represents a history that is just going by the wayside." And to think that you've got $700,000 to do it. Someone to me a while ago said, "Well, you know, I don't know. I don't think I could take that money and make that into a mansion." I'm telling you, there isn't any place you couldn't give me a million dollars or 700,000 now, and I could not turn that into something really, really, really good. And so, we have a chance here. I want to restore the Stockton Davis House, and we have zero money to do it. You've got a farmstead out there with acres around it, all kinds of stuff that it can be built into, and you've got $700,000 to do it. This is absolutely a no-brainer for Leander. If you don't jump on the ball and say, "Well, we better do this," instead of saying, you know, you might say, "Well, things weren't done the right way, so we're going to let go right now." I'm telling you, Mike Hagenstein would be up here on Troy's butt, for one thing, and say, "Look, fellas, make it do. Let's do what we need to do here."
That's a long line, by the way.
Well, Mike Hagenstein kind of cut through some of the chase there. Okay, I've got less than a minute here, but really, the city can make that into a showplace. You've got the money to do it. You're saying, "We've dropped the ball way back there, but now we are responsible, and we're going to do the right thing?" I mean, I can't say this any other way than this is not a great thing to do for the Bryson Farmstead and those people. And anyway, I'm going to probably get through here before my three minutes is up, which I can't let happen. I mean, we just, I've got to deplore y'all. In fact, I had John Cowman, who signed off on that a while ago, and he said, "I can always make things..." Oh, I don't know how he said it. "Always cover up for things." And I said, "Isn't this your signature?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Are you covering up for this?" He said, "No, no way."
Thank you.
That's the way it goes. Thank you, darling.
All right. I think she makes a lot of great points, so I'm going to make a motion that we accept...
And I'll second that.
All right. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? All right.
And Mayor, can we have it, or have some discussion, maybe, at a future meeting about the 300,000? That was kind of, I'm just saying...
Karen said she can raise that.
Okay.
I don't know. Mary's bread looks pretty good. That might be one way. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So, Item 21, discuss and consider a cooperation agreement by and between the city of Leander and the Texas Housing Foundation. In order for the THF to acquire, finance, renovate, operate, and manage the affordable housing development known as the Cedar Ridge Apartments located at 2702 South Baghdad Road, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
Mayor and Council, the Texas Housing Foundation proposes to purchase the Cedar Ridge Apartments located at 2702 South Baghdad Road. They are a fair housing foundation that is, was created in Burnet County. In order for them to operate this facility in Leander, they have to get the authorization of the city to do so and enter into an interlocal agreement. And so, the items before you are a resolution and an interlocal agreement that would authorize them to operate that facility in the city. And there may be a representative here. Yes, they can, in the event that there are any questions.
Motion to approve?
You need...
Do you have a question?
I have a question. What is the timeline on this, if this is approved?
The purchase?
For the purchase and the renovation?
Sure. So, I'm here joined by Marco Cruz. He's the executive director of Opportunities for Williamson and Burnet County. They have kept the property in great shape, so it doesn't need a whole lot of repair. They recently replaced, they redid the parking lots, they repainted, replaced fence. They've done a lot of work recently, so it doesn't need a whole lot of repair. There's approvals that we have to go through with the state to buy a property, and so that takes time. I'm assuming mid-next year will be final?
That's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Right, we have a motion to approve?
A second.
All right. And a second? All in favor? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Item 22, discuss and consider the addition of a performance stage pavilion at Lakewood Park and expenditure not to exceed $1,500,000. Authorize the interim city manager to execute any and all necessary documents.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you. Want to bring this forward tonight. Gave you a lot of background information in your packet and some potential sketches and schematics that were completed, and I'm not going to read through all of that, but do want to let you know that Lakewood Park is under construction. There was a smaller performance stage overlooked, more or less, including the original park master plan, but this was, it was not included in the final budget to move forward with. And at this point, this is when we began looking at a stage pavilion at Lakewood Park. I asked half if they would graciously come on board to provide not only some concepts, but also some cost analysis with that, and that's what you have in front of you. These are just simply concepts of what could be done and the approximate cost of those. Obviously, as we move forward, we want to engage experts in the field of stage. We want to engage our Public Art Commission as well and others. So, we are looking for that not-to-exceed number so we can start entering into those agreements, especially with half at this point, so they can begin fully looking at design and engineering of what that would be and working with those experts that are in the field, too. And at this point, I'll entertain any questions you might have. There was four options. Yes, sir. This is the brim. It's a half, sort of a quarter-rounded stage shade structure over a nice stage area. I do want to point out to the upper right-hand corner, because even though this is a stage, to bring in your scaffolding, your sound projection, your lighting, that most many bands or even theater productions or others might have, we want to make sure that the, this could be accommodated under the shade structure, because this is a multi-faceted, multipurpose type of structure. It's obviously going to be used for a lot of different things, and I mentioned that in the background as well. This could be a private event for weddings, wedding receptions, or other types of events, corporate picnics, corporate barbecues. We don't have anything along those lines in our community to offer. So, there's a lot of positives to that, so I want to bring out that one. If you'll move to the next slide. This is the crown. It is a more of a wood structure, very nicely done, obviously. Little bit, the one before it was a little bit on the higher end. This is more in the middle. And the same thing on the top right, you'll see this stage, the scaffolding and the structure for sound and equipment. And the next one, please? This is the reveal. This was the highest cost of all of those, the four projects, only because it actually slopes, the metal slopes vertically and horizontally. And it's, but it's a sort of an iconic feature for the park, not that the others aren't, but this one's quite different than the others. So, because of the structural integrity and engineering that goes into this design, the welding and everything else, it is at the top of the list. And then the fourth one. This is the wrap. It's a metal band shell, so to speak. It's, some have referred to it as a treehouse effect, but we do have a lot of trees at Lakewood, especially in the backdrop. Again, the top right shows that we can certainly fit a large scaffolding and equipment structure This one does have a type of fence. The others did not. That's obviously one of the things that we would want to look at. When there's a performance going on, obviously, those will be removable, but during other types of events where more public is invited, we certainly don't want somebody falling off. So, there may be, as we move forward in an actual design, then we'll be able to determine how best that would look.
It looks like they all have something around...
I thought they did, but I wasn't sure.
You have to kind of, yeah, look at it a little bit closer. Yeah, that one sets, you can see it because of the contrast.
And again, these are concepts. There may be a combination of one, two. It may be something, once we really talk with some of our experts in the field, there may be some things that they see additionally. I would certainly challenge you. I've, for several weeks, I've researched a lot of open-air outdoor pavilion theaters across the nation. There's a lot of components. There's a lot of iconic structures that are out there. Certainly, your larger cities, New York City, San Francisco, Kansas City, they're huge. They have much bigger budgets, too. But we know this is, could be a really good beginning for something in our area that's not presently offered. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, Mr. Tummens, and forgive me if you already said this and it went right over me. I'm assuming acoustically, all of these are equivalent?
Well, that's one of the things we want to look at.
Okay.
Absolutely. As part of the expertise that we want to bring in and talk about acoustics.
Okay. So, if we choose a style and it's not the best acoustics for what we want it for, we can change it?
You're not selecting a style tonight?
Oh, I thought we had to select the style.
Oh, no, 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 no. Absolutely not.
Okay, we're just approving the moving forward and then gotcha.
These are just concepts for us to, yes, these are just concepts to give you a price for and a type.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, once we move into the actual, you know, engineering, design, architectural, then we'll come back to this group, this body, with a final presentation of what that would look like.
Okay.
We've got to engage those other folks first.
While it's on my mind, can we...
No, I would not, no. No, sir, I would not suggest picking a design that I hate.
So, if we approved 1.5 and we ended up only spending 700 or 600, we just...
That's correct.
...spend the other money?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes, sir.
While it's on my mind, can we, when we do get that proposal, I would love to have the maintenance, on the long-term maintenance?
Yep.
To understand what is required there, too, potential.
Great point, because I've already brought out a couple of these to half as we were going through them and just looking at them and talking about them, that there was some couple of maintenance issues that I had with one or two of them, so, yeah.
And Mr. Tummens, I'm sorry if you already said this, but with this amphitheater, we would be able to have music festivals?
Correct.
And that would bring in income into the city directly?
Yes, ma'am. Theoretically, that's exactly what we're looking for. Not only opportunity for us to do our own, such as perhaps Liberty Fest?
Sure.
Maybe Bluegrass Festival, as it continues to grow, but also, there's numerous entertainment companies out there. I pulled down off the internet the other day, one of the, just to give you an example, that it was, excuse me, I thought I had it right here. Now, the economics of music festivals, East Providence, New Jersey, partnered with Live Nation, collaborating to bring new amphitheater to the waterfront there. And so, Live Nation is one of those entertainment companies, but we have several even locally throughout central Texas, so.
So, we could expand south by southwest up to Leander?
You know, that may be a possibility, absolutely. Or we do something on our own.
I mean, this lawn is, how big, it's not?
It is 13 acres.
It's 13?
It's a half-mile in diameter. The outside loop, concrete loop, is a half-mile in diameter. So, even for our fitness gurus that are out there, they can go out there, they know going twice around is a mile, so they got a mile in, so, absolutely. So, we're designed to be that way.
It's amazing.
But 13 acres under a lawn, yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we got an email today from somebody who's on our Arts Commission.
Okay.
And, and it's a good question to ask. Are we only going to have music, use this as a music venue for our city, or are we also going to have theatrical productions?
Yes, and you'll notice that I put in your background information, there's a lot of potential opportunities, off-Broadway Theater, drama productions like Shakespeare in the Park, which is all over the country, really. I mean, that's one of the mainstays. Dance performances, poetry readings, comedy shows, I mean, this could be used in a lot of, a variety of ways, yes, ma'am?
Well, I, he did point something out that was, with this, there's no changing rooms. And there's nowhere to change.
Correct.
So, if it's a theatrical production and they're doing more than one act, then they may have to go in and change. And so, I'm just trying to think of how this would work in that way.
Right, and that's why we want to.
Maybe temporary trailers brought onsite for that.
We want to engage our, the experts in the field, so they let us know how that can look.
Okay.
My experience in the past has also been, yes, there are tents, there are trailers, there's things that you can move onsite to help with those type of things, because usually you're, you're there for a short period of time and then you pack up and you leave, and the next, the next event will take place. But, we want to make sure that we're getting everything for the biggest, the best for our buck. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But when we engage those folks, we'll know. Some throughout the country, and I encourage you again to go look at some of these, some have those type of facilities attached to them, but I'm sure the cost does go up some when you're talking about in enclosed space or some type of space, and, but there's many that don't, so.
Well, I'm looking forward to having a place, hopefully, where we can get the Williamson County Symphony Orchestra to come perform in our city.
Wouldn't that be awesome?
Because they go everywhere else, but there's no place in Leander for them to perform.
That would be awesome. Love to do that.
I have some questions. How many parking spaces are there at Lakewood?
Yep, great question. 250.
250?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, the challenge is parking, obviously. With Liberty Fest, we're going to be engaging LISD, they, with Wiley Mills School and Rouse, they have about 2,000 parking spots. There's three churches, Central, Live Church and Generations Church. They have about another 1,000, so there's 3,000 parking spaces just in that central area. Yes, we'll be working with, not CTR, right, the Cap Metro, excuse me, and it's a very simple loop. We've already looked at it on maps on how we can bring in 8, 10,000 people into Liberty Fest very easily, very comfortably, and get them back out to their vehicles and cars, so.
Great. A big part of my issue with this is that the timeline for it, as we talked about earlier, 40, 45 days, you want to get arts input, you want to talk to people about designing stages, green rooms, changing rooms, places for the stage manager, things like that. Yes, it would save money to do it now, but it would also have been cheaper to do it when the concept of the park was first done in the bonds, and this was included in it. I think that the choice between saving some money and doing it right, I prefer to do it right and to hold off. Not forever, but a little bit to get the input from the various.
I would like to certainly proceed to see if we can meet your criteria and your, your goals, our goals, within the next few weeks. And if we get to that point, and we can put the brakes on, but I would like to try to see if we can't meet that. I've gotten half's full, half associate's full assurance, they're going to put everything into this in the next 40, 45 days, and work with our contractor, so we can make sure our costs are in line and get this moving forward.
My problem is that next 40 to 45 days timeline, instead of like a 60-day.
Go ahead, Jason.
I think Jason has a question now.
We're talking two weeks.
I'm trying to be our rules.
It'll be tight, but I agree, we need to, we want to make sure we're right.
We're not to that round yet.
And we know the park is not going to, the ribbon-cutting dedication, we're looking at late March, early April right now, so if that's the only factor and we can get something really close and we're just two weeks difference on that, then I'm good with that, if council's good with that.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
It's me? Alright, let me get some sweet nothings out of the way.
Okay.
I love your passion. I love what you do for this community.
Thank you.
I love your drive and your vision. Now, let me, do you have Ebenezer Scrooge?
Okay.
Which y'all knew were coming. This is fiscally irresponsible, and it's not you to spend 1.5 million dollars to authorize to spend 1.5. We just talked about how $300,000 was shamefully spent. If we want to do this, then we need to give it to Leander and let them decide to put a stage out there. Now, if you want to save money now, put the conduit in, get the stuff that's going to cost money and has to be dug up and has to dig up the park, put it in now, but take time. This is another rush and it's fiscally irresponsible, and I absolutely cannot spend or authorize to spend 1.5 million dollars on a credit card for a stage for theory. We need to do some studies, we need to see how busy that park's going to be before we spend this type of money.
I would like to add in my two cents. I'm not Ebenezer Scrooge, though. I've been looking forward to this park, the east side of Leander doesn't have any, any parks, so this is huge. We've been waiting for this for a long time. I agree, that's an awful lot of money. However, what was originally approved, correct me if I'm wrong, was an outdoor amphitheater. And so, to me, to do a performing arts center with changing rooms and bathrooms, that's, that's a whole nother actual construction. An outdoor amphitheater is outdoors, you can see it from all angles, so obviously, I mean, we got some estimates from you that the actual, what do you call it, the overlook itself, the stage, we're estimating around 300,000, and it's the shade that's going to cost us so much. But when this park was first kind of sold to the public, we discussed an outdoor amphitheater, so I would, I would like us to stick to doing at least the stage.
The original concept for the overlook stage was a, I don't know how, I'm not sure the exact geometric shape, but it was wider at the front, narrower at the back. So, we enlarged the stage so we could accommodate our scaffolding for more mid-to-large-scale events.
Okay.
So, the stage is more than just 300, at least under these concepts. The original was, yes, that's what you, that's what we were looking at.
I guess I'd like to say that, A, I don't remember ever being told from the previous years that we were taking the stage out. I remember in the early discussions that it was a part of it. I don't remember when we took it out and that coming before council, so I don't know.
It did.
Okay.
Yeah, we made that presentation, sir, I'm not.
But.
Yes.
I think if we approve it and it comes back, again, I'd like to be fiscally responsible and maybe we don't get the gold-plated, you know, disc, you know? But we get something that will provide shade and shelter for people performing. And, you know, one estimate we had was 700,000, but we might have a couple hundred thousand left over from the rest of it, so maybe it makes it five, you know? And I think for that, to have a really nice park that you're looking at having Liberty Fest in, having performance in the parks, things like that, to me, it's, it's worth it. So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve it. It still has to come back to us, we still have to sign off on it, but I think, you know, I think we can do it and be fiscally responsible. The voters did approve the bonds for Lakewood Park and, as well as other parks, so, you know, again, it's up to us to decide whether to sell those bonds. I get it, right? And it puts it over the original cost, which is not good, but I think we can hold off maybe on San Gabriel and then finish this one the right way. So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve it with the caveat that it has to come back, obviously, for final approval of design and cost.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a first and second for limited approval. All in favor? All opposed? Alright, motion passes four to three. Thank you, Mr. Tummens. Alright, so, we're going to move to 23, discuss and consider appointments to the following boards and committees, Active Adult Advisory Committee, Public Art Commission, TERs Development Authority, Board of Adjustment and Appeal, Ethics Commission, Historical Preservation Commission, Library Foundation Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I just wanted to say before we get into this that, you know, I can remember when I first got on council 2015, we didn't have enough people to fill slots, and we've come a long way, because now we have a lot of good people, and, you know, it's tough, because we're not going to be able to pick some really good people. So, you know, whatever we do, just know that we want you to serve, we want to try to find a place for those that are interested in helping out. So, don't get deterred at all, you know, if it doesn't work out, that you don't get your first choice, or, you know, we'll find a place for you. So, I'll just go down the list. So, we'll start with Planning and Zoning Commission, place one, do we?
I'd like to nominate Laura Landtrip, then she.
Place one, councilmember?
Place one.
Place one. We'll have to nominate place one.
Oh, no, is that?
Just for P&amp;Z, because P&amp;Z.
P&amp;Z?
Oh, no, P&amp;Z.
Place one is nominated by?
No, it isn't done that way.
We didn't do that last year.
That's the original charter.
Oh, it's, it's been changed. Maybe our attorney will weigh in.
Yeah.
The charter used to specify that each council member would nominate an individual who, an individual for each seat in the P&amp;Z, and then the charter was changed to take that out. And so, that's, that, it's not, this, this, last year, y'all didn't do it that way because of that change in the charter.
Right, I remember I asked you about that last year, and you said that the charter overrode the ordinance, that the ordinance was old.
Right, yes.
Okay. So, okay. Right. Laura?
We do, we do, yes, we do, yeah.
Well, Laura wants to be reappointed, and she's been really, really good. I'd like to nominate her for place one.
I'll second.
To continue, thank you.
Alright, we have a first and second for Laura Landtrip for place one. All in favor? All opposed? Right.
I'd like to nominate Donnie Mayhem.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second for Donnie Mayhem. All in favor? All opposed? Alright, Donnie in place one. Place three?
I'll nominate Ron May.
I'll second.
Okay, we have first and second for Ron May. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, Ron, five to two. And then place five?
I'll nominate Annette Sponsella.
I'll second.
I'd like to say that we talk about representation, never mind, I'm not going to say anything.
Okay. All in favor?
Mayor, could you specify who seconded two voices?
Jason.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he did. We both did.
Okay, did you get the vote? Okay, let's do it again, I'm sorry. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Board of Adjustments, place two, Gary Hampton.
He's currently on place three. Are we reappointing him for place three?
Well, alternate, alternates typically move up to the, alternates typically move up to the Board of Adjustments on the full-time, and right now, we currently have Elaine Martin, so she should move up to, to place two, because she's our alternate. And then, we have definitely two open seats after that.
Okay, so you want to nominate?
Nominate Elaine Martin.
Okay. All in favor?
Do we need a?
We need a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
I'll second.
First and second for Elaine Martin. All in favor?
You look like you have a question.
No, I just wasn't ready for that, I didn't, yeah.
All in favor?
Oh, oh, sorry.
All opposed?
I'm, I'm sorry. Let me clarify, the Board of Adjustment, right?
Correct.
We have three open places, correct? Typically, the alternate, Ms. Martin, moves into one of those places. And so, that's what Ms. Stevens, Councilmember Stevenson was making a motion on, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, how is it that we have a true vacancy? If it's an automatic, I mean, not really automatic, but, okay.
Do we have another nomination?
Well, I did, but I don't want to go against what? Kate Warwick for place two.
I'll second.
Kate Warwick. Kate Warwick.
Kate Warwick? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Alright, all in favor of Kate Warwick? All opposed? Kate passes six to one. Alright, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Place four?
Just to be clear, Gary Hampton was in what?
Place three.
I'm sorry, I said his name by accident earlier, so that's something I've never seen.
Okay, Gary is currently in place three and is seeking reappointment. Raul Camacho is place four, seeking reappointment. So, I'll nominate Gary Hampton for place three.
I'll second.
We have a first and second for Gary Hampton for place three. All in favor? In place four?
We've already filled them all up?
Oh, no, I thought we have one more. I'd like to nominate Raul Camacho for place four. I'd like to nominate Raul Camacho for place four.
I'll second.
All right.
We had, I'm sorry, just to be clear, there's three openings. There was a motion to move Ms. Martin from alternate into place two.
It failed.
Failed.
Okay, sorry.
It's confusing.
So, Raul Camacho, did we have a second? All right, all in favor? All right. Raul is in place four, Board of Adjustments, Library Foundation.
Well, we have the alternates. We have.
Well, Elaine Martin is still alternate number one, yeah.
So we have two and three that are, no, I'm sorry. Yes, well, I have two that are alternate since they're, they're open, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we just tell you both of them? All right, I would like to nominate for alternate two, Monica Rosell Mathina, and for alternate three, Melissa Bradford.
Okay, we'll do Monica first.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second. All in favor? All right, Monica is place alternate two.
Melissa Bradford.
Three, Melissa Bradford.
I'll second.
We have a first and second for alternate. All in favor? Are we good to go?
We're good to go, thank you.
All right, Library Foundation. I'd like to nominate Mike Sanders.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second. All in favor? All opposed? All right. Mike passes five to two. Public Art Commission, place one.
I'd like to nominate Amanda Gifford.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second for Amanda Gifford. All in favor? All right, Amanda passes, place three.
I'd like to nominate Carmen Khan.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second for Carmen Khan. All in favor? All opposed? All right. Carmen passes six to one. Place five?
I'd like to nominate Monica Rosell Mathina. I think she was interested in that as well.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second for Monica. All in favor? All right, Monica passes unanimously. We move to TERES Development Authority, one position.
I'd like to nominate Carson Guy.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second for Carson Guy. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Ethics Commission?
I'd like to nominate Frank Stiles.
I will second. All in favor? All opposed? All right, Frank passes six to one.
I'd like to nominate Brandon Rainey.
Second.
All right, we, we have a first, second for Brandon. All in favor? All opposed? All right, Brandon passes six to one. Place five?
To nominate Glenn Galen, but actually, he's currently in place three, so.
Yeah.
To reappoint him for place three, we just, can we switch that around? Yeah, to keep him in the right place.
So, so that means that we're kicking off Melissa Bradford then, because she's currently, all these people wanted to be reappointed. Everybody wanted to be reappointed, that we're replacing now with other people.
Well, does it matter? Can we just put Glenn in place five? It doesn't matter. He didn't, we don't have to put him back in place three, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
So, what's the difference?
If the position, excuse me, if the position is vacant because the term is up, then you just point, appoint someone to fill that position.
Okay.
So we didn't nominate somebody for us spot, we just nominated for them so we can include in the language that Brandon is on whatever place, right?
So you're nominating Glenn for place five?
Yeah, whichever, three for reappointment or moving to five?
Five.
Okay, thank you.
Easy. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All. All opposed? All right, Glenn passes seven to nothing. All right. Active Adult Advisory Board, place one.
I'd like to nominate, reappoint Julie Ramsey.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Place five?
I'd like to nominate Ann Pell.
She's currently in place 10. Can we reappoint her in this age?
Yeah, we'll just.
So the next reappointment, or next.
Who's in place five now?
Nobody's in place five.
These are all, all of these spots, even though someone's, correct me if I'm wrong, even if someone is seeking reappointment, they don't necessarily have to hold their same place.
Okay.
Ann's good with, Ann's good with a new seat.
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to nominate Kirsten Lynch for place five.
Isn't there already a motion?
Yeah, did we?
I thought we said we were going to leave her in 10, I'm sorry. Did you want to go ahead with five? Okay, we'll put her in five.
Who are we voting for?
Ann Pell.
Ann, okay.
There's a first and second. All in favor for Ann?
Who was the second?
All right, it was you. Jason. All right, place six, I will nominate Kirsten Lynch.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All opposed? Passes six to one. Place, place seven?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Howell.
I'll second.
All right, first and second for Jennifer Howell. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Place eight?
To nominate Nancy Snyder?
I'll second.
Sorry.
All right, we have a first and second for Nancy Snyder. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
I'd like to reappoint Dean Flaherty. Place eight?
I'll second.
All right. First and second, Dean. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously.
I'd like to nominate, oh, sorry, I wait for the next place, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate Bob Shaver.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor for Bob Shaver? All right.
Is that all or do we have one more?
We still have historical.
We have one more, don't we?
Well, not on the active. So we move to Historical Preservation Committee, place five.
I'd like to nominate Christina Twing.
I'll second.
All right, first and second for Christina. All in favor? All right, passes unanimously. And Parks and Rec?
I'd like to nominate Dean Flaherty.
I'll second. All in favor for Dean? Passes unanimously. And that is it. Okay, we move to item 24. Discuss and consider ratification of Mayor Hill's appointments to serve on the Citizen Action Advisory Committee with terms expiring 2020. I had a couple of names that I wanted to do. Timothy Davis would be the first. Yes. Well, we'll do each one. So first and second for Timothy Davis. All in favor? I did. Okay. Second, Laura Landtrip.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second for Laura Landtrip. All in favor? All opposed? All right, Laura's in. And then. One more. Oh, Stephen Davis, that's it. Uh, Stephen Davis is the third.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second for Stephen Davis. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Did you get that? You look puzzled. Excuse me? Yeah, yeah, they've all, yeah, so they want to be on it. Okay, so 25. Discuss and consider the tender release and substitution agreement with Hanover Insurance Company and Austin Engineering Company to complete the Leander TOD 183A and FM 2243 wastewater 18-inch and 12-inch line project and authorize the interim city manager to execute any and all necessary documents.
Mayor and council, on October the 4th, 2018, City Council ordered contract for the construction of Leander TOD 183A and FM 2243 wastewater line project to Central Road and Utility Limited. CRU has defaulted on that project early on. They began work in January, they defaulted in February. This is a three-party agreement between Hanover Insurance Company, which is the performance, which held the performance bond for CRU, which protects the city from such things as this. And the agreement also includes Austin Engineering Company, who will be performing and completing the work. Austin Engineering Company is a competent engineering company, has done work in Leander in any number of places. And we, they are, we certainly accept and recommend them. Basically, Hanover, the cost for Austin Engineering to complete the work is more, significantly more than is remaining in the contract. Basically, Hanover is going to pay us a total of $238,467.95 to complete the work. We will then prosecute the work as if Austin Engineering had been the low bidder and originally awarded the contract. Staff request approval of the proposed tender release, release and substitution agreement with Hanover Insurance and Austin Engineering Company.
Counsel?
I motion to approve.
I'll second. Shocker, right?
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? All right, motion passing in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. All right, 26. Discuss and consider an ordinance setting speed limits for Heroway West.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Following the roadway widening project for Heroway West, city staff has conducted a speed study on that roadway, consists largely of data collection analysis of vehicle traveling speed, evaluation of roadway geometry, site distance, and neighboring development. Based on this analysis, staff recommends setting a 45 mile an hour speed limit from US 183 to a location 155 feet west of Riverway Lane, and then from there, setting a speed limit of 50 miles an hour to a location 3,000 feet west of Lakeland Boulevard, which is coincident with an existing 55 mile an hour speed limit sign. I'm available for any questions. No questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, closing comments. Place one?
You know, I don't like going first on this, but I will. I need to find it. While I'm looking here, I have to say what you mentioned earlier, I'm so impressed with all the people that are interested in serving. So thank you all, congratulations. And to those that wanted to continue to serve, it, sometimes it just turns out that way. Due to no fault of anyone, so there's always a place. We can, we can find places to, to serve. I want to talk about today, we had the Leander bus tour through the Leander Chamber, and what a fun experience. And Robin did a great job on that. Thank you, Robin. We had a couple of buses full of realtors and a few crazy people and, you know, a few people that just wanted to ride along, but I think most everyone was interested in what Leander has to offer. So that was, that was pretty awesome to see. Okay, so Leander is a pretty great place to be. We really don't have any major issues, per se. We don't have any earthquakes, we don't have any, I mean, tornadoes are, you know, we have some wind, but we don't really, we're not, we don't have any natural disasters. We're not really flooding. We have a few things here and there. But y'all may not know, yes, I'm a Texan, but still, there's an event that occurred on the West Coast 30 years ago today. Does anybody know what that was? The Loma Prieta earthquake, Santa Cruz County, yes, 6.9 earthquake. In a matter of seconds, eight to 15 seconds, 63 people were killed. 3,757 were injured. It occurred at 5:04. The total damage was 5.6 to 6 billion dollars. That's equivalent to 11 to 12 billion dollars today. So my husband and I lived right in, at the base of Nicene Mark State Park when we first got married. And it was pretty awesome to, to be right there and see how beautiful everything is and how it overcame all of the disaster. You know, I spent 14 years there before I moved back home to Texas, and I never experienced an earthquake. And years later, you know, after, after moving there, I, I thought, the first one, big deal, what was that? I mean, it doesn't even equate to, you know, a storm or the, the wind that we have here. It was silent, I heard nothing. But it was a small one. And then we had another one where my cat's even looking at me, what is that? And then the pots and pots started bouncing up and down on the, on the deck, and that was kind of scary. And I don't know what to do. I know if there's a tornado, you go get in the bathtub, or you stand in the, you know, you do something. I didn't know what to do. So that was just a little reminder of how lucky we have it here. We really don't have any natural disasters to speak of. The wildfires, we have them occasionally, there's the, you know, it's, it's, could happen. But we are so lucky to live here, and I think the people that are escaping California and coming here know that too. And, you know, I, I say it a lot, we need to teach them how to be Texan because it's a pretty good place to be, and I'm happy to be here. And thank you for, happy to be here, here with y'all and happy to be serving. So Jason's looking at me like he wants me to stop talking, so that encourages me to keep talking. Yeah, okay. Thank y'all. I love Leander, thank you.
Okay, Laura Landtrip, I want to thank you. Jason Anderson, I want to thank you. Uriah Nelson, I want to thank you. Steve Kowitsky, I want to thank you. Melissa Bradford, I want to thank you. You were willing to step up to the plate and serve and volunteer your city again. Thank you. You've done a great job and you have good hearts.
Well, I had a long story, but I'm not going to do it now. I just want to thank our police force. You guys and gals are some of the sharpest that I've seen. I've been all over the country and you guys are incredible. And you pulled over my wife a couple weeks ago. Good job.
Dean, I just wanted to thank Catherine for reopening one of my childhood traumas. It was good, fun to experience as like a seven or eight-year-old. But anyway, last week was the Texas Municipal League Conference, and city leaders from all over the state come to one place to learn lots of good things. So there's city managers, city council people, and various municipal vendors. And last year, when I went, nobody knew Leander, really. I mean, there were a couple of people, and you had to kind of explain where Leander was and what was going on. But this year, everybody had a Leander story, almost literally everybody. So everybody knows where we are, and I just wanted to thank our mayor for putting us on the map. So, everybody knows where we are, and I just wanted to thank our mayor for putting us on the map.
That was awesome. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm very excited about where Leander's going. This is an exciting time. I'm most excited that, that Ms. Thompson got extra minutes tonight. And thank you again for your presentation.
I would also like to thank everyone who has served and will be serving, and there'll be many more spots and options available, so thank you. And I also have to thank Ms. Mary H. for the fresh bread that I'm smelling all night.
Yes, that is evil, just so you know, but thank you.
In such a good way, evil, but in such a good way. And then, I would like to remind everyone, Saturday, October 26th, so not two days from now, but the next one, is the Leander Pet Spooktacular Event hosted by Leander Police Department and the Leander Veterinary Clinic, where Leander residents can get free pet microchipping. And non-residents, only $5. You can't beat that. And it's in the Kohl's parking lot from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. Hope to see you there. Thank y'all.
Well, we definitely are on the map, and it's in a good thing, it's a good thing, too. I just heard from a developer today that, you know, he opened a, a line of small office spaces, and the whole park is, before it even opens, it's all filled. Awesome. And he wants to go do another one. So, that's really good news. So, you know, I want to thank staff for, this has been a long week. We've come in here three times this week, so I appreciate what everybody does. And I'm really excited that we have a city manager, it looks like, that's going to lead us in the future. And it's a very positive step. It's been a long process to make sure we found the right person, and I think we have, so... God willing and the creaks don't rise, and he accepts, then, you know, he'll lead us into the future. And I will tell you, you know, Leander is definitely on the map. I mean, we had interest from city managers all over the state. I mean, this is, this was probably the premier job in the state. And we wanted to make sure that we found the right candidate, and we did. So, I appreciate everybody's input, appreciate Matt Powell, the work you did in the subcommittee, Jason, Chris, and council, and, and staff. And he's not here, but Gordon Pierce, who has done a fantastic job. He's not leaving tonight, so, but he's done a fantastic job stepping in and leading our city during this time, and I appreciate it. So, Gordon, I hope you're enjoying yourself, and we appreciate it. So, with that, we will adjourn. The time is 10:20, thank you.